Good afternoon, everyone. Today's date is May 7, 2013, and the time is now 6:00 P.M. Council will please come to order for its special work session. And I want to thank all of you who took time from your schedules to be here today. Just a reminder, would anyone who has a cellphone either turn them off or set them to vibrate? And for the audio record being made, I would like to note that the following council members are present at today's work session. Excuse me. Ms. Bolton, Mr. Bonato, Mr. Matt Hay, Ms. Miles, Mr. Schu, Ms. Velazquez, and Ms. Baca Gonzalez. The agenda item for our work session is a presentation regarding fair and free program. And Mr. Aker, I believe you may be handling this item.
I will get it started.
Okay, good.
Good afternoon, I guess. May her members of City Council not used to be in this light at this moment, having our discussion. I asked for and talked with council members about having this work session. I thank you for indulging. I think this is, I wanted to take the opportunity with things that have been happening in the past week, with Mr. Cooksey coming into town, spending some time in town, to allow us to have more discussion and seek some general direction from council based on what you've heard, what you've seen, what you see today as far as this potential opportunity. As you're aware, we're faced with many opportunities within Trinidad. Background music. A lot of it's related to our historic downtown, but throughout the community, there are buildings that are being underutilized and being, that have challenges. I think there's also a desire that instead of relying on our historic natural resources, coal, oil, and gas for revenue and jobs creation and activity in town, that are there other things that can be looked at. So with that, I think this is an opportunity that we can consider. There's a lot of details, a lot of discussion that may need to happen and likely will have to happen if we do continue to look at this. But I think it gives us the catalyst of doing some things that we've been talking about doing for some time with staff, like doing a building inventory, taking a look at what our infrastructure needs are, taking a look at some of the activities that we need to accomplish as a city, as we look at how to improve and how to, for lack of a better term, revitalize Trinidad. Back in about the middle part of December, not long after I got here, Andy Cooksey was in town. I had been in the area, got to know Trinidad by spending a couple of weeks in town, my understanding. And he ran into Louis, he met Dave Miller, I think he ran into the mayor, and started having discussions about the concept of, you know, after he walked around the community, he saw these buildings that were being underutilized and he had made the comment, and I didn't find out until later, of, you know, what can be done with these buildings if we worked with the building owners and the banks to try to bring in people that want to invest in the community, invest in the buildings from a sweat equity standpoint. Put some of their efforts into it in exchange for being able to use the buildings for little or no cost upfront. And that was the start of some discussions. Louis was excited about it. I was invited to a meeting with, the mayor was here, Louis was here, Ed Traumer was invited and was here, I think Joey Degarbo was here, and I believe Ed from First National Bank was here at that time, taking a look at the concept. And I think everyone said, hmm, maybe that's something, it's got some merit, maybe it's something to take a look at. Over the next 90 days or so, Andy went back and was working with his team to develop more information for us because it's a, from what I've learned talking with Andy, especially in the past couple of weeks, is this is a concept that has never been tried in the United States. He's done bits and pieces of it on a smaller scale in other places, is what he's presented to us. And it's a different approach to commerce as far as is how do you bring businesses into the community? How do you make those businesses or allow those businesses to be sustainable? It's not the typical corporate model, and Andy will go into more of that detail. Andy sent us some information in the February/March timeframe. We started to take a look at it. Both Louis and I at that time were really busy. We didn't, in hindsight, we didn't give the amount of time that we probably should have given to that information to really dig into it. Ed Traumer had some time, took a look at it, and we continued to have dialogues, Louis and myself, and Ed Traumer, we talked with Andy, and there were some ideas of how do we move forward with this? And I think Andy's staff, or Andy's folks, some of his team members and Andy were ready to march forward. They had some websites up, some portals they wanted us to take a look at. We were not able to look at those, and those went down. We had further conversations in the April timeframe, and as a result of our not understanding some of the information, not having, not taking the time to really take a look at it, or understanding the timeframes that Andy had in place, we decided, let's step back a little bit and relook at how we're going to do this. Maybe Andy was moving a little bit quicker than what we were comfortable working with. He's learning more about working with us. We've been, we've learned more about working with him. And that culminated with Andy saying, hey, I'm going to be in the area in this timeframe. Ideally, he would have had people here as well, some of his team members, but we weren't quite ready as an organization. I felt from an organizational standpoint, it wasn't ready for us to bring to City Council yet. We didn't have a good enough understanding from a staff perspective, working, how is this going to work with, within the community? How can we take advantage of this, of this opportunity? I think now that we've spent some time with Andy, I spent some time this week with him. He spent time in the community and I think learned more about the community and some of the challenges we have with our buildings, with our building codes, with our ordinances, that we're going to, we're looking at, how do we continue to seize this opportunity? Is it worth continuing to work with each other? I think we're still in that dating stage, for lack of a better term. We're not at the marriage stage yet. So with that, I want to, you know, kind of turn it over to Andy, and he's going to give some general presentation. I think it's going to be a little bit different than what he gave at Economic Development last week. That kind of started things. Andy originally had planned on leaving last weekend, but saw what he's seen here, felt like he had to spend a little bit more time in the community, because this really is a community-based collaborative, public-private partnership type model. I did get a chance to talk to one of the folks in one of your handouts, the lawyer from London, Giles, today with Andy, and he's experienced in doing limited liability partnerships. And this is a, they're usually like, public-private partnerships, a little bit smaller. This concept is taking something and putting it on a broad, broad base. We don't know if it'll work yet. Andy's still in that phase of trying to evaluate it, and that's what we want to kind of present to council as far as some of the concepts. And then at the end, we'll try to wrap it up with, where do we think we go next with this? And we want council to ask questions and give us feedback as well. So with that, I'll introduce Andy, and he'll fill in any blanks that I may have left off. But we just want to give this a chance to council before we go much further down the road.
Thanks, Tom. Yes, my name is Cooksey.
Mr. Cooksey, could I have you perhaps come to the little podium so we'll be sure to pick up what you're saying?
Sure.
Thank you. We have to twist that thing back in your direction. There we go.
Hi, my name is Andrew, my name is Andrew Cooksey. I live in Venice Beach, California, and Mexico, and Europe. And what I'd like to add is that Tom is correct that we probably just begun. However, from our point of view, we, and I also want to add that I want, this is not going to be me standing up and giving you a presentation as much as it is answering your questions. And I would like Tom to, I'd like to have him relate to you what he understands. I would like Louis to add in whatever he needs to add in. And I certainly want to feel that we're here to solve some problems that we may have in coming here, or that you may have in us coming here. And the word collaborative, I think, pretty much describes it. So I will describe, as I told Tom, what our experience was. Our experience was that we came, we found a receptive audience for some of our ideas. They are very different, very different approach. We found a receptivity in the community from members of the city government and from members in the community. And I think it was December 21st when this meeting occurred, and we went back for the holidays. And then January, I painted a picture of this, which is my doing, to our partners. And our partners, let me explain who we are. Our partners are international. They, you can see some of them there, and there's the dates of when they're involved. And they range from the early 20s to 82. They have varied backgrounds. A lot of us come from environmental, sustainable, but we have a little bit different approach than the, than some of the people in our community, meaning the alternative community. We tend to be more, say libertarian in our approach. We believe in free enterprise, but we believe it should be more cooperative, and we focus on communities. We believe that communities can best serve the people and things should be more decentralized. In that area, we found a receptive audience for people like Ed Traumer who agree with that. But we also agree that you need to have, and free enterprise, that you have, need more cooperation. You need to do it with local government and creating forms that basically allow an infrastructure of interrelated organizations, institutions, including the city government and county government, to join with free enterprise or cooperative enterprise businesses and organizations to create a new way of doing things. So what happened? What happened was we, I put my web team and I said, look, we were on a schedule to, basically in nine months, to develop our demo site. And our intended audience was not a small city or county in Colorado. A lot of the, of the concepts are for younger people, are people that have, in similar things to what we're doing, to local, local organizations like the transition movement and many of the things that are in this community, but actually they're over in the, probably more in La Veta than they are here in Trinidad. I would say they're alternative. But what excited us about Trinidad, besides your beautiful city, was the idea that we, that there was a diverse community with, this is the way I put it, with a progressive mayor and the Republican, I guess Ed's co-chair of the, and that everybody was agreeing. And it seemed that way, and I got very excited. They started, my team members and my children started calling me Mr. Trinidad, and I got very excited. And if you read through what you're actually looking through...
It was still on the copy, so I just rounded.
So these, what they requested was that we, you're seeing printouts from a specially-created website that had been created for Trinidad. And it was cobbled together from things that we had, and we were trying to second-guess how to communicate, because we weren't communicating to our normal audience. And these are printouts, which I might add, you're going to need to understand that our organization is comprised of hundreds of people who have self-funded what we feel to be necessary changes. We regard it as intellectual property. The original website had, as the people who received it will tell you, in order to enter it, there were codes. We regard this as intellectual property. And I've agreed to pass these out under the understanding that after viewing them and understanding, and this is only maybe 30% of what we sent. We sent interactive websites. It was, the functionality of those websites, because we use it to vet people, and we kind of adapted it, is that it requires interaction. So if someone doesn't respond to the material, it shows up that they didn't respond, and it's the way we vet people. Unfortunately, we sent it, as he said, at a bad time. So what happened is when Bernadette opened it, Ed Traumer opened it and started interacting with it. And, but unfortunately, because these guys were busy and other people were busy, they didn't. So to be very candid with you, within two weeks, I had a web team that was in revolt. These guys are not reading it, they're not looking at it. We can't invest our time because I'm not, I don't order people around when they're putting 20, 30, 40 hours a weekend and not getting paid. It's very difficult to do that. So our position is that we wanted to work with this small community, and we felt we had a plan to do that. So what we're really showing you, because at that point, you might say I had a strike, or actually, I just said, you're right, let's pull the plug on this. That was some time in, I believe, middle March, about six weeks ago. So all you're really seeing is undeveloped website that was, we were developing based on interaction from the people in the community. And what we were hoping, there would be a grassroots movement of institutions and people that would plug in. Having said that, and having been here, I'm still very, I don't know whether I'm Mr. Trinidad anymore, but I certainly, yeah, and those are some of the things that we're using to sell, you know, we were, we were trying to sell our own people, because I think what I would, the main thing I would like to communicate is that we felt, in a sense, we were the buyer, not the seller. We wanted to see if we really got input, and then we were willing to put in, which we can discuss, we were willing to send. And if you read some, there's, there are even in the bio section, you'll see emails addressed to Mayor Baca Gonzalez that were committed to coming here in May. So we kind of got a jump on it. However, we had certain things. We said that in order to lower expenses and to come into a more friendly atmosphere, we didn't want to be staying at the local, you know, Trails Inn or Holiday Inn or anything. It's to find a place, if our people were going to come in, for them to stay, to lower the expenses. I'm not sure we're really to, we need to discuss that at this point. But what I want to say to you is that we, our credibility and veracity, we welcome you taking a hard look at this under the microscope and seeing if this is for you. We definitely have a different approach. We're not into big multinational corporations coming into communities and establishing their businesses and having them leave. We have a lot of feelings about that. We're into a community-based, free enterprise system that has cooperative with the community, existing businesses. We're not socialist, actually. We don't, we don't, we think that the smaller the government, the better. We think that the more cooperative the enterprise is, the better. And so what you're seeing is what Stephen, I believe Stephen's here, what he termed gobbledegook, because it probably is, because we didn't get a chance to really develop it, and it requires interaction. So I think what we're asking, and what the problem was, is that unless the City Council authorizes this collaborative, interactive process with the city, and unless we see that there really is a groundswell of movement on the part of the community to embrace some of these ideas, which we can discuss, we have very specific ones that we could discuss, how you can use, we've done a quick analysis of what's here and how it can be done. I've spent a lot of time talking with Tom, I've spent a lot of time talking with Louis. And I'd like to turn this back over to Tom at this point, now that you know where we're coming from. But what you're looking at was what was there. And then you're looking, when you look at the back of these things, these pretty pictures and pictures of you guys, and, you know, that's what it is. We welcome, we welcome questions. We welcome, I offered to Tom today, I said, you can call this, we've got on Skype. And if you take a look at who some of our people are, and they're just some of them, I think you would see that, a couple of things, that we're very qualified to do a full-scope evaluation and to have a project there that could literally, within a couple of years, transform the city into something that would be very different. And we would really put some energy, time, and resources into doing it and publicize it. There's a lot of people that are not on here. Two of them are my sons. We can mount a very credible campaign to put a lot of people on your streets, because we have a lot of, and I think a lot of your tourists could come from Europe, quite frankly. We've been working with Kuchar, the Kuchar Resort people. I met with people from La Veta. And I am going to go up there tomorrow, and I'm going to be there tomorrow, and then I'm going to be there again on Thursday, and then I'm going to be going to Denver for a day to visit a couple of friends, and then I'm going to be flying out. I'm going to be very honest with you. I see a city that is beautiful, but is falling apart in terms of your buildings, the infrastructure needs a lot of work. And you may not like our approach to pulling it together, but one thing is for sure, if you take a hard look at what we're offering, and what we're saying is that we're sincere, we're not selling you anything, we're offering to collaborate with you, we're offering to become part of your community, bring, you know, a lot of idealistic, a lot of them are under 30, we've worked with a lot of them, into your community to help clean these places up. You've got issues with, with how you're going to do it, because I don't see that you're going to be able to, there's not going to be some magical person coming with $300 million to put it in. So there's got to be solutions to real problems on a case-by-case basis, which you've got to do it across the board, because it's, it's not possible to have people, no matter how good their intentions are, to do this building by building. Because as I understand the issues, and we can discuss these after I sit down and turn this back over to Tom, they need to be addressed in a synergistic, whole fashion, full scope, because the problems are both in the way the infrastructure is being run, there are problems in the way it's approached, because they're, it's really a financial issue. And what I would like to see is, and I offered to do this, to meet with your bankers. We have, we have, they're not, not all of them are on here, but we have high-level people that have a different approach to financial, we have a very different approach to how finances are handled, they're very different, but they're credible people. And they're not just green, they're, they come from across the spectrum. And those solutions need to be implemented throughout this country, because the currency that I think you heard when he spoke with Giles Dixon, who's one of the top corp, well, he doesn't want to call himself a corporate attorney, but he, he deals with infrastructure in Dubai and Qatar, and probably is going to be knighted soon. Things have been adopted in the House of Commons that he has. And I think he heard, if I may say so, I think he heard a more polite version of what I'm saying. Did you hear that?
That's right.
That's correct. And if you talk to our people, you'll hear that. We have, one of the persons there is named Tony Spurgeon, and he is, I speak with him five, 10 hours a week. He lives in San Diego. He's also British. He is the nuclear systems engineer that when Chernobyl and Ten Mile Island went down, he developed a team that flew around under the International Atomic Energy Commission and put the Human Reliability Assessment System in, that basically safeguard. He's a systems expert, so is Giles. So I have these older mentors that have helped me, and then I, we have these younger kids that are fired up and ready to go. If you like that vision, if you want to see something done different than what is done now, then you will need to allow these people to take the time to explore with us. And on the 21st of this month, you will need to vote whether you want us to come in and invest, and how it will be done. We're not going to volunteer our time, but we are willing to invest in your community. Thank you.
Mr. Cooksey?
Can I sit down and answer this? My voice projects.
This packet of documents, you're saying this was the stuff that was on the website?
This was a portion of it, but a lot of it was interactive.
I remember receiving an email, and when I tried to log in, I had some difficulties, and I think I had reported that to Mr. Aker. So I really, if this was what was on there, I haven't seen it, and I'd like to give a little time for folks to look at your data.
You can keep these as long as you're willing to sign a confidentiality agreement. That's not a problem. We'll, we'll, we'll give you more information, because you should have the information you need. I'm just saying, we are a democratic organization that's self-funded, and we regard, I have a hundred and some odd people that I report to, and everybody signs confidentiality. It's what it is. It's what we do. And when you went on the site, the codes and those kinds of things, it was there, it's just standard operating procedure for us. But I agreed...
Well, I'm sorry, I just, I wasn't able to get into the site. And I'm not saying for us to take these home, but...
You could, as long as you're willing to acknowledge it.
If you could give us like, maybe just three minutes so that folks can page through this and come up with...
Absolutely. And you will know, when you go through them, you will see that there were emails, which I guess you didn't see, that were, that were addressed to you that said that people would come here. That they, it wasn't just, you know, ideas.
Yes. I listened to you here, and you were saying your ideas are different. Can you give us an example of something?
Yes.
I mean, you know, what, what you would really do with one of our buildings, or our ironwood inner structures?
What's not included here was a draft of a plan that we were working on that articulated, we identified four areas that we would focus on. And we'll give you a copy of that, too. But I would prefer to work through these issues and to synopsize it down, not with the draft. I think the draft was the, the working draft, which, and I understand it wasn't Tom's, was actually released at this Economic Development meeting. And it wouldn't make sense, because it was, it was, it was supposed to be work that we were going to collaborate on and discuss. But I can tell you what the four areas are. One, and this relates to the county, is sustainable agriculture. And one of the areas that we wanted to look at was how do you create, and I talked with a man named Tony Isa in the area, he's interested in that, how we would create, you know, we were talking about sustainable slaughterhouses, but I since understood that there were some great, great ideas in the community for, for slaughterhouses that are portable, that can go around in the community. And then you would have, you know, like a place to, a meat processing, a small, because we're into small things, small equipment. What we can bring to the community is that, because we do have a lot of credibility, and we have an international reach, is we, and that was the next phase for us, is to get equipment manufacturers to cooperate and to bring it in. So that's one way we can leverage it. it in. So that's one way we can leverage it. So we would set up, in the industrial park, we would set up a, some sustainable businesses. One of them would be utilizing what used to be the old salsa factory, because it's probably qualified, is we would put what we call a multi-product processing, food processing plant. And one of the people that we were bringing that had committed, I think she's there, Hani Lindstrom, if you look through, she made a commitment to be here in April or May. She actually, that's what she does, she goes into and sets up factories and looks at, you know, the conditions of them, and she, they bring in, we bring in sustainable architects to look at what's going on, you know, that, that kind of thing. And that could be set up, and we would put equipment in it. But if it's going to be, that's a good candidate, because there's not going to be a lot to do. You can put an enterprise in there and get it going. The second, so that's an example.
Right.
Okay. We, we feel that one of your strategies, which is kind of a controversial issue, is to create this as a, and I'll tell you why it's controversial in a minute, but is to create kids coming here. There's a new model that, that has worked real well, and on our website, you would see, for example, we worked with the Ecuadorian Ministry of Tourism to create ecotourism in their country. And we, you know, and they've adopted a lot of the things. There are communities that, that target youth, under thirty. We call them the backpacker kids, young, and they, they're not going to be staying in hundred-dollar or hundred-and-fifty-dollar hotel rooms. They're going to be staying in twenty-dollar, twenty-five-dollar night beds, but you can put dorms and they stay in. So that's another example.
And that example there, what are you bringing for them to come here for? Well, I mean, that's.
Well, that's where the controversial part comes in. Because you have, you have the, first of all, they need something like Kuchar, which is why I got a hold of Bruce up there to begin with. Want snowing, and he's doing the kinds of things, and we're going to help him raise the money, and we're going to do the marketing plan. We do the marketing plan. If you're talking about tourism, the first thing you need to do is you need to build your infrastructure, put a couple of thousand beds in town, not buildings, but beds in town. And you need to use the, the way these hostels work, and they're just spreading out all over, is you have the kids run them, they're responsible for them. They, you make enterprises out of them, and they run them. And you license them, and then you get a centralized booking system that is affiliated with the city, and you make money on it. So that you don't have to raise your taxes. Because we don't, we're into public-private partnerships in which you try to find ways to get revenue that are, that are not taxes. Because we're kind of on the conservative side when it comes to taxes.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if you want to sit down, I, I know you wanted to sit.
No, it's all right.
That's fine, I mean, I want you to be comfortable.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I understand.
Now, that brings up the issue, if you look at the demographics, these kids smoke pot. You're gonna, you can't probably envision, so I couldn't tell you until that issue gets, we can help you with that, because there's ways of doing that that are going to be better for your community. I would not be in favor of the county legalizing pot. I would think they should have, and I'll tell you why. Because the federal government is going, if you're doing this for recreation, for kids, for people to come, and you're monitoring it very carefully, and you're making money on it for the city to build your infrastructure, you've got a good story, and it's a way to do it, it's public-private partnership, can be done that way. What they're going to be coming down on, and rightfully so, is if all of a sudden you're the Trinidad or the ones in Colorado that become the pot exporting capital of the world, you're going to have the feds in here, because they're just not going to put up with it. So there are same policies where you have, you utilize this in a community way for the benefit of the community, and you create a community that's tolerant. I have two sons that smoke pot, I have two that don't. I have one that doesn't even drink anymore, and he shouldn't. You know, he's been working a recovery program in AA for thirteen years, okay? And he should continue, okay? It's, but if it's a moral issue here, if you have, I've actually, you know, my background is not, it's a little unusual. I've worked for labor unions, and I was, I did public relations, and I did for police unions. And so I understand the need for structure and order in a community. You have to have that. But the best communities, the ones that we have down, like for example, Montenegro in Ecuador, they have probably a hundred and twenty hostels there. And part of what we were showing is how that works. And they police themselves, they make sure in the community, in the hostels, in the towns, in the bars, in the places where the kids are partying, the kids are safe, people are safe, they're keeping the real criminal elements out. And you need a policy here where if the kids are watching out and they know the rules, they know the ones that are bringing in the bad drugs, and methadone is not cool. It's, it will destroy you. Cracked cocaine, cocaine is not cool. And though, if you set your infrastructure and your community upright, you're not going to have those problems. Now, you can just say, "We don't want to do it," and I respect that, you know, because there are, there's problems with pot, I'm not going to say there're not. But I would argue that there are a lot less problems with pot than there are with alcohol, and yet we have alcohol. And even that needs to be, you know, you need, there needs to be some structure in the community to deal with those issues. So you can create three thousand beds here, that's ecotourism. You can create the kinds of, you have a great skate park here, that the, that from what I understand, the community created. Wonderful story. I'd like to tell that story. That's because that's, you can, you have, there's buildings where you can bring virtual businesses in. And that's one of the things, we're very interested, because we're in the business, we're setting up a portal site, and the simplest, although you can read it in what we sent you, it's a, we're, we're on Internet four point oh, and approaching Internet five point oh in our thinking. And you don't need to do anything but create buildings that are safe, throw petitions up, and get the communications capability into the community to do that. I could keep going.
Hold on, I understand. I just, now, when you're talking buildings and that, are you talking, we do the interstructure as part of the city to get these buildings?
No, we actually.
Or for someone to come in and do it?
We would, but it would need to be, one of the things that we, we work with too that we bring is, you need to do, we, we do it in, on all areas, whether it's buildings or supply chains, is sustainable continual improvement certified. You have to start somewhere. And if, if, if you made the building safe, and now I understand the issues a little bit more, if you make the ordinances so that, that you can move into the buildings that are safe, they should be safe, okay? Then you can deal with it. But we believe that the banks that own these, and these private property owners that are not present in this meeting, except for a few, need to step up and join together with the city to create the ways to do it. Because if I'm, from what I've seen, this is a huge problem. And, and the way that ordinances come into effect, the way that codes and ordinances come into effect, if after a year, that you have a bunch of buildings because they've been continuously occupied, probably don't meet code, but nobody's going to go and examine. And then you have ones that have been deserted, that, some of them may be even in better condition, but in order to get them up to speed, you've got to put so much money that it's not financially sustainable. That's a problem, and it needs to be addressed. But you, you as the city cannot address this, private enterprise needs to step up and address these issues. And they're, I don't know what the percentage is, but it looked to me, from what I was looking at, and I'm not a building expert, but I, I do trust Louis, and from what I see, what I've seen, there's a problem. So if nothing else, maybe I'm your wake-up call.
You could well be.
I could well be. And, because I'll tell you the truth, because we, you know, but you got to deal with these things.
You bring a lot of interesting ideas and new concepts and different kinds of thinking here, okay? From my experience, people come to this county even because they ran out of gas or they got arrested here.
Pretty much.
My point is, and direct question to you, sir, is what brings you to this area of Colorado?
You know.
You talked about having it in Mexico and Europe and South America, and all the places that you've been and you described.
Yeah.
What the hell brings you to Trinidad, Colorado?
A friend of mine who's struggling to open up a horse race, the true, the story was that I came for a week and stayed for a month. And Dave Miller said, "We've got this great eco planner guy here that has all these ideas, and you ought to meet him." And I said, "Not yet, let me just hang around the community for a little bit."
Okay.
And I, you know, I travel, I, I don't stay in five-star hotels or four-star.
I gather that's.
Yeah, I bet. But you might look on there that one of my sons, right, who, who also believes in what I'm believing in now, was, was one of the founders for Expedia and created their rating system. So, you know, I'm aware of, because I travel with him, and he got to do it, I, I stay in five-star, I don't shun away from them, but I don't, I stay in. So I stayed over at Hotel Savoy while I was here, and kind of, you might say I was kind of looking at what was going on and looking at the community. And there's a spirit in this community, even with the people that are over at Hotel Savoy, of where they have a lot of, you know, they want a better life, people want a better life. We are, we definitely want to see people improve their lives.
And how does what you're proposing make a better life for the people who live here?
Do you want me to just start going down the list of the people that?
Top three things that come to mind.
Top three things is, you've got a lot of people on welfare here.
Okay, so you'll put them to work?
Yeah, absolutely. But we won't put them to work in the same, we're not going to get some company to come in with all their stuff and then leave on you. What we would do is that they would need to invest. Our thing is, we don't have any partners, we don't have any employees, only partners.
Okay.
In the management. But we can do businesses, we can do business with people.
Second thing?
We have employees. Second thing is that we would require the enterprises to take a dedicated gross percentage of their revenues and put them back into buildings.
Okay.
Put them up. Third thing?
With your list.
Third, third thing is that you connect up and start developing smaller enterprises. Our, our model is that you, you're able to produce, first for your local community, and then it goes out, and then you duplicate that. So you could have, you could have, we have brands, we have national brands, but it's based on our model.
Earlier, you talked about four different things, and all I got was sustainable agriculture.
Yeah.
And you wanted to add any of the three.
But, but back to, back to. I gave you, I gave you.
You gave us two.
Oh, okay. I gave you three.
What was that one?
We talked about small processing locally.
Yeah, we have that.
Ecotourism.
Right, I'm sorry, you did.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that was, come on, okay. What's the fourth one?
The fourth one, I say, would be the virtual, you know, creating, creating this is like a different kind of virtual community. But a lot of these buildings can be used, right? Because they don't require a lot, you have big, open spaces, just throw petitions up, empty out some of these stores that you, and that's another thing, you've got all these stores that have all this used, used furniture and used clothing and things like that. That's the fourth thing. There's actually, I think, if you read through the original proposal, we identified, maybe there were five, I just have to look at.
I just got your stuff, so I haven't had an opportunity to read any of it, but many of those buildings were purchased a few years ago when the proposition was that Trinidad would host gambling.
Yes, I, I don't.
And of course, all that fellow partner went to Black Hawk Center City and Cribble Creek, and nothing came here. So those landlords have very little interest in.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not making them wrong, I'm saying.
Let me, investing in those buildings. So my point is, they are privately owned, and as you have suggested, they may be held by some bank or some financialist.
Yes.
So how do you reconcile your ideas with those owners and those banks to get them to do the things that you're wanting to do?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you. And I even, part of it is by, you know, just looking at the ways to do it. And a lot of our people, including myself, think out of the box. And for example, the, it's called grandfathering, but what was the term that you're?
Non-conforming.
Yeah, non-conforming. Well, they're in different states of district, the rules for non-conforming are, you know, and the rules for, so if nothing else, if you put, if you change some of the ordinances and you put people in those buildings.
We can legislate that they require to fix them or make them safe.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, and, and if it's going to require putting sprinkler systems and you have a real, because we do real business plans, we give on our website, we give people, it's incubation and enterprise formation and ways to do it. But they're not going to come in to just start, and you want to get, you want to start utilizing the buildings, and then the, the quid pro quo is that they dedicate a percentage of the revenues to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that brings me to just one thing, let me add.
Make a point.
Is that if you have a public-private partnership and you have a fiduciary trust that handles the revenues from everything that comes in, and you have distribution of those revenues, including to the city, included in, you have a transparent system of distribution of revenues that can be, that you can actually manage. And that's a very different way to do it.
Okay, maybe I don't see things, I see things more black and white than you do.
Okay.
But just bear with me.
Sure.
The obvious benefit to Trinidad, to what you're proposing, is this is one of the ones that's thriving in community. I've rejuvenated a whole lot. And now we're swirling a drain, I recognize that. Okay, so the benefit is you rejuvenate our community. More importantly is, two questions. What's in it for you? And secondly, what do you want from us as government?
We want you to create a public-private partnership, which we will explain more in detail. As Carol's husband Steve said, which I think he understood, he said, "Oh," at the end of our conversation, "It's a simple idea, but it's complex." And it is complex, because you need to work out the details, and there are variations on how it can be worked out. We have some very clear guidelines and principles and precepts that we go by. So the first thing you would need to understand, and you're going to need to authorize your, your city officials to take the time to understand them and work them out with us, is how this would work. Because there's no point in us getting in here if you're used to doing business differently, because we're not going to be doing business. So you should understand that. I would suggest that the council members, and we will, we will create a way for you to do that, which you would probably need, in order to make an intelligent vote, you would probably need to spend five hours a week actually on our sites and in asking us questions, and us asking you questions, to see if there really is a fit. And that was the purpose of the original one.
Mr. Cooksey, according to my clock, it's six forty-seven, and we have a couple of hearings that are scheduled to begin at seven o'clock, and we have a really long agenda. I'd like to give members of council an opportunity to pose questions, if they have any, and then give you an opportunity to summarize, including Mr. Aker, Mr. Venado.
Now, Mayor, you know, right now, I feel like a major league baseball player standing in the at-home plate with the full count, three balls with two strikes on me. And I'm waiting for a fastball to come in so I can hit it over the park.
Right.
But now, what you're throwing at me is a curveball.
Right.
So the curveball's coming at me, and I'm saying, "What the heck's going on here?" You know, I'm waiting for that fastball to come, but I'm not getting any fastball from you. So in other words, I'm saying is that I'm kind of confused of what your presentation here is. Like I say, Mr. McKay said, "We didn't have a chance to look at this." I think that we have to really come together as a council and study this, and refer to Mr. Akers on this morning, maybe Louis, before we can really come up with an answer. I do appreciate you being here, but like I say, there's a couple of curveballs that you threw at me, and I really don't understand the direction of what you're going at right now.
Right. And can I answer that? Because you're, you're correct. The, the curveballs are being thrown, not intentionally. They are, what you're interpreting as a curveball may be seen by someone else as a fastball. And this takes time, and it takes a commitment, and we're not asking for money, we're asking to make sure that there's a fit. And we had a plan that did that. We're now four months in to interacting here. So there were four months that could have been, or at least three of those months that could have been used, so that you didn't view what I was saying as a curveball. What I'd like to do is that there is, there is definitely a solution here. I'm not asking for it tonight, I'm telling you what happened, what you're seeing. You're welcome to take these home as long as you're willing to sign a confidentiality agreement. I hope you pose questions. I hope you authorize them to explore with us in depth what is possible. And on the twenty. And on the 21st, I'll tell you where we're headed, on the 21st, when you meet again, depending upon how much effort you want to put into it, and they put into it, you can vote.
That's good. But the next three weeks, are we talking about the-
Thank you.
I believe Ms. Miles had a question.
Oh.
Yes, Ms. Miles?
Can I just say a few things?
Oh, yes, sure, sure.
What is it that we're voting on for the 21st?
I would just turn this back a little bit.
Well, that's one question. Let me ask you another question, more specific to your proposal. If you look at, now, I'd seen some things that I saw last week, so I'm a little bit ahead of other members.
Right, do you understand that that shouldn't have been given to you? Because we didn't authorize, that, that was a worksheet that was sent to work through and to discuss, and without, it was a misunderstanding, that was released to you. So I'm going to try to answer your question, but that was not something that I was given to you because it hadn't been processed.
I'm actually asking you a question about what you just handed me.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, a little bit more familiarity than some other council members, only because I've been looking at this for five days instead of five minutes.
Right.
Okay. If you look at page two of draft of Trinidad, Colorado proposal, it says, you're talking about four, three levels. First, there's an MOU stage, then there's a letter, never end of understanding, second is a letter and intent stage, which then leads-
It's the other way around, I'm sorry. It may be wrong in there, I'm just telling you it's the other way around.
Okay, let me just finish my question.
Okay.
The MOU, you're proposing an MOU, which leads to a letter and intent, which then leads to a legally binding, for three, two stages preceding a legally binding agreement.
That's correct.
Okay, whatever order you go. Now, it says that you're talking about doing this, it says the MOU would be a multilateral agreement between two ad hoc organizations, here in free, in the Trinidad, yeah, I'm summarizing here, in the Trinidad community, okay?
Right.
I'm having a little trouble, maybe just because I think a little more black and white, as Anthony said, here. How do you have an MOU between ad hoc organizations?
That's a good question, and I can answer it. The way you have it is by making agreements about who's going to do what, how they're going to do it. Because when we say, use the word "ad hoc," it's different in every case. What the Trinidad Community Group is, it includes the city, it includes the institutions in the city, it includes individuals, and it can either be by agreement, or you can create limited liability partnerships. And many of those questions were, could be answered by Giles Dixon and some of the other people that deal with the real specifics of that, and that's developed.
Okay. While I have trouble understanding an MOU between ad hoc groups, I can sort of see that because it's not legally binding. Then I can wrap my mind around it. So how do you have a legally binding agreement between two ad hoc groups? What would be binding about it?
Well, the ad hoc groups, I mean, maybe it's just a, the ad hoc groups is, it's not, for example, in public-private partnerships, which was explained to Tom when he spoke with Giles, is normally you have a hospital and a, like, let's say, a hospital and the city, and they enter into the public-private partnership to do it. What we're proposing has never really been done before. We're saying that you take a group that can be formed, it has a defined purpose, for example, if you're going to, you have a seven-year agreement that revenues from a existing eco-enterprise that is, can be constructed of five or six different groups or individuals combined together to produce a product or a service.
Okay, is the answer to my question that by the time we get to legally binding stage, the groups are not ad hoc anymore?
They're, they are a defined entity, but they're ad hoc in the sense that they were brought together, maybe in an ad hoc way, and they can be disbanded easily to-
They become formalized through the process.
They become formalized, but they, they can disband after their, the limit of time they formed, and there's dissolution agreements.
It's now 6:55, and I'd like to see if there's any other council member who has a question. I want to make sure, council, Ms. Bolton, do you have a question?
I still have numerous questions. I'm very pleased that Mr. Cooksey came and gave a much more broad presentation this, this evening, so that we can start to, to learn more about this program.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes. All I've had is this pamphlet, and I've studied it for the last week. I don't know what you folks have, but tonight, he says, "Now, this makes no sense." So that's a little unfair. Why aren't I giving what they've got? That's a little unfair. So you ought to see what I have.
I think Stephen, Stephen should have what we've been presented with.
Maybe my outlook would look a little different if I have exactly what you folks have, but maybe I should share this with you and see what you think.
Let me just, at this point, because I, I do want to keep us on track, let me just say that I'm a little concerned about the requirement that we can hang on to the paperwork if we sign a confidentiality agreement. And I certainly am disinclined to do that, and I'm certainly not prepared to entertain a vote on something as early as May 21, 2013, because my sense, from my colleagues on council, is, they like the idea, but I don't think we've got enough of the nuts and bolts that we've been able to chew on it, digest it, and get ready to put something on an agenda for action. We're starting the process, and I'm certainly not saying no, but I think we need, this needs to ferment a little bit more and ripen a little bit more.
Right, Mayor, I agree with you. The thing about it is, and I'm going to say this again, when you came on our site, you did sign a confidentiality agreement, because you wouldn't have been able to see even what you saw without doing that. That was part of it.
Well, I certainly don't remember. I remember trying to put in a password or log in, and not being successful in doing that, and then sharing that with Mr. Aker.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, because we certainly would have given you, and what I'm saying is, is that, which is why I ask Mr. Aker to do it. The process, the LOI is not make a decision to do it, the letter of intent is to say-
If you have a confidentiality agreement, I certainly would want Mr. Downs to look at it before asking any council member to sign it.
Here's what I'm going to do.
Yes, sir.
Is if I have your word that this information is for your use, and you just affirmed this, then, not a problem. But we can give you better than this. The only reason we printed this out was to prove to you, and to give you a general idea of that we had sent it, we did create it, and you get an idea, kind of a glimpse of what we're doing. What, and I'm sorry that Tom's not telling you the end, but what we were saying was, in the next two weeks, we will provide him with information, you with the information, and if you say to provide him with information, we will be happy to do it. And then, if we see that there's a fit here, because we, we also have a say, we're not, we're not asking you for any money. We'll do it.
And our city manager, under city charter, is the individual who's responsible for accumulating things, putting them together, and then bringing them forward to council, and-
And to people, and to people in the community.
Yes, and, and Mr. Aker has endeavored to do that. So that we can stay on track with our time, can I ask that Mr. Aker, you and Mr. Aker, and our legal counsel have further communication on these issues and determine if we need to have an additional work session or come back?
Yes, absolutely. We're looking for interaction.
Yes, sir.
And at this point, if you authorize as a council, Mr. Aker and Mr. Feinberg to devote the kind of time that you're going to need in the two weeks, so that we can also take a look at whether there's real interactivity, rather than what we saw before.
And that is really within the province of our city manager, because basically, the mayor is the ceremonial and figurehead in accordance with the charter. And council acts on recommendations brought forward by the city manager. So I, I'm going to encourage you to stay together, and I really do want to keep us on track. We're right at 7 o'clock. I'd like to ask council members, do you need a, maybe a five-minute break before we begin, or should we just roll into the hearing? Mr. Aker, I'd like to give you an opportunity to say a couple of words.
Thank you. Mr. Cooksey and I have talked about how, in concept, what the next couple of weeks could look like. What I'll do is put more information together and make sure that you guys are informed if we need to talk about it a little bit more next week during the meeting, we can definitely do that. And, and a lot of it is, the, the next couple of weeks is just continuing to see if there's a fit. That's why Mr. Cooksey is here this week, is trying to make that determination, what are, what are their feelings? Because he's asked me numerous times, I said, "Really, it's your decision. We're looking at this as an opportunity, but it's got to be a partnership." And I think we'll continue, and I'll work with, I mean, there's things that Louis and I have already talked about as far as starting to take a look at our building inventory, those are things that we need to do. Working with, I mean, you'll find, next week, we'll be discussing our building codes. We're already starting to take a look at some of this stuff. So it's getting a better understanding, and then, as we, if we can redevelop those websites or put some stuff up for you, working with Andy, we'll definitely do that. And it's not a, the decision in a couple of weeks is not, "Are we going to do this or not do this?", is, "Do we continue?"
Okay, that's fine. I want, I want to respect the time of those that are here for two hearings, which I believe may take a considerable amount of council's time. So Ms. Audra, I'll give you a moment to switch your-